Next is Agenda Item 11C, a presentation by Wesley Gray regarding the PNM Public Safety Power Shut-Off. Mr. Gray?
Yeah, I just want to do a quick introduction. My name is Kevin. Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Kevin Perdosa. I'm the local government and community manager for PNM for Southern New Mexico. First of all, I just wanted to commend your emergency management team, especially the fire department. They have been very instrumental in providing us information as far as your critical infrastructure and things that we have to keep an eye out when we are evaluating things and especially whenever we have extreme weather conditions rolling to our area. So, thank you very much for partnering with us on that and helping us work through that. And Alex, as well, thank you very much for always being available when we reach out, when we need something. So, I just want to say thank you. And I'd like to introduce Wesley Gray. He is our executive director for field operations amongst many of the other things that he does. He will be presenting today on some of the efforts that PNM is putting together to stay ahead of the wildfire season and also share more information as far as our public safety power shut-off program. So, with that, Wes?
Mr. Mayor, Council, Town Staff, it's good to see some of you again. And we want to provide some updates about PNM's wildfire prevention program and public safety power shut-off. We've been meeting with Town Staff for a year, and we've been providing some updates and getting feedback on how we can improve our program. So, with the packet I give, I'm going to just provide some updates on things that PNM has been doing over the last 12 months. We've been doing a lot more in the vegetation management arena in and around Grant County. We have a big project going on in the Gila National Forest where we're expanding the right-ofways. A lot of our vegetation management work is going around providing resiliency so that we don't have as many power outages, but it's also there for wildfire protection. Our wildfire program is really ramped up to provide for safety in our communities and for the citizens there. So, we're doing a lot more vegetation management work. We're leveraging some software that utilizes AI to help us optimize our program. So, a lot going on in the vegetation management realm. We're doing a lot of hardening of the electric system. We had surveys done back in 2022 and 2023 where we did aerial patrols of our system. That was a top-down kind of inspection, and we did a bunch of repairs associated with that. This past year, we did a pole test and treatment program where we went through pretty much all the poles here in Grant County. We identified a number of them that didn't meet strength requirements. So, there had been about 200 poles that have been replaced in 2024. There's another few hundred that we have to do other miscellaneous repairs on, so those repairs will continue in 2025 and hopefully get them done before 2026. Again, the whole focus is wildfire safety. We don't want any of our infrastructure failing and that being a potential source of ignition out there. Given the dry conditions, you know, the fire marshals talked about it, and it's really heartening that we're all kind of working together to do the same aim, to try to protect our communities. As part of that hardening program, we've also changed our construction standards. So, in areas, we're trying to take advantage of putting infrastructure underground where we can, but that's a really expensive proposition, especially when you're digging in rock. So, we're hardening the overhead system that's out there. So, we're putting up heavier-duty poles, heavy-duty crossarms, again, replacing a lot of older infrastructure so that that system is far more resilient and not as prone to failure. We've seen the weather over the last 12 months and the climate change really being hard on our system. We've had a lot more frequent outages. We've had more sustained outages as some aging infrastructure has failed. And so, we're working to implement systems to try to improve the performance of the system, try to improve the reliability. And with some of that is including utilizing some other technology and trying to protect communities. So, as weather conditions start to deteriorate, you know, our normal wind season, which we typically say is April 1st, started a little early. And so, PNM has implemented some software products where we're doing some extensive fire modeling, fire risk modeling. So, we're looking at temperature, wind speed, wind gust forecasts, fuel moistures, relative humidity, and we're modeling four times a day. So, as the National Weather Service issues forecasts, we take those forecasts, plug them in a model, and look at how the system would perform with that and what kind of risk there is for potential wildfire. And so, it's gone from being, you know, a concept about a year ago to being implemented. We were really hoping to wait till April 1st, but it's, the month of March kind of came up on us, and we ramped up our program a little early. Last week was a particular challenge. We implemented a couple of programmatic things to try to prevent power line interaction, anything blowing in it, whether it's a tree falling in it or a piece of debris blowing up in the line. We're looking at trying to prevent anything from causing it. So, when we see those conditions and those forecasts for those conditions start to deteriorate, we can implement a couple of different steps. One is a step where we put our devices in our substations and out on the line in what we call a non-reclosed status. So, if anything comes in contact with them, they open up, de-energize the lines, and again, it's providing for some safety. But when conditions get extreme and there's a forecast coming up for the end of the week in certain parts of the state where it looks like it's going to be extreme, we would consider what we could call a public safety power shut-off, which is we would proactively turn off the power for the period of time for that weather event to move through so that we remove that risk. It's just too risky with the fires that we've seen in other parts of the state. Over in Lincoln County and up in more San Miguel County over the last few years, those catastrophic wildfires can be devastating for communities, and we want to remove power lines from being a potential cause. As we were considering it and we're doing some outreach to, you know, some of our consumers, we had some folks on social media complain about, well, you know, here we go. We're just turning off the power. Talking about the inconvenience, we acknowledge it is inconvenient to lose your power for any reason, whether we're doing it intentionally or whether it's an outage. But we had a commenter post a note saying, what would you rather have? Would you rather be inconvenienced by having a forced outage that PNM caused, or would you rather lose your home to a catastrophic fire? And it was a great point, and we were like applauding that person for standing up. And we're trying to get that mindset. We're trying to change the thought process of our consumers to be more wildfire-aware and be prepared for what might happen versus how we've normally lived. We've become a little bit complacent as a society, and we're trying to really drive that. So, we're doing everything we can to provide for that wildfire safety. And public safety power shut-off is just that one piece of it, where if conditions really are extreme, we're seeing really bad winds, we're seeing really low relative humidities, we're seeing really low fuel moistures out there, we would just turn the lines off, ride through the event. The challenge with that for us is, once we get there, we're going to have to go back and inspect every one of those line miles. And in our Silver City District here, which stretches from Lordsburg to Silver, out to Mule Creek and out past Cliff and Gila, all the way to the Arizona Line, all the way to the cliff dwellings, up and down the Members Valley, all the way down to Perrin Road in the south, it's a big district. We have about 900 miles of lines in those, and we're going to have to get eyes on every mile of that line. So, it's going to take some time to do that. We're going to be, it's an all-hands-on-deck situation for us. So, we will be bringing in crews from outside the area. We'll be utilizing our crews here in Silver City. We'll be bringing in some of the contract crews that work for us in other parts of the state, and we'll also call for what we call mutual aid. So, we'll be reaching out to partner utilities in this region to bring them in to have resources so that we can try to get power back on as safely and as quickly as possible after the event. So, we're working on those things. Unfortunately for us, pretty much most of the areas PNM serves in New Mexico are what we consider a high-fire-risk area. They're areas that have a higher-than-normal potential for wildfire. And we have a map on one of the pages that show, and apart from communities like Deming, Almagordo, and in the city of Albuquerque itself, pretty much all the other communities PNM serves is a high-fire-risk area. And so, if we have potential storms hitting the northern part of the state, southern part of the state, it stretches our resources pretty thin. So, that's why we're talking about bringing in extra resources. If we can fly air operations, we're going to bring in helicopters and drones to help us patrol. There's some terrain down here in Grant County that you have to walk. You can't even get a UTV to because the terrain is too rough and too remote that we end up walking. But we'll do whatever it takes, and we're getting all of our personnel out there to try to help document what we find, get the patrols done, and we'll do what we call a step restoration. We'll start from the substations themselves and then work out to the end of the line. It's going to take us some time, but that's one of the things we're trying to do is, we'll have an event, we're going to do some notification, and then we'll try to notify everybody and post what we call estimated time of restoration. So, people can plan their lives around how long it's going to take for them to be out. So, length of the storm plus the length of time it's going to take us to inspect it, and then we're going to publish that as soon as we can after we take the outage so that people kind of have an idea of when, what to expect from us. With that, we've conducted some exercises with our field crews here locally. They've gone out and done some patrols, and with that, we've got a pretty good estimate of how long it's going to take for certain lines. But it depends on what the conditions are and how much extra resources we were. So, we know what it would take with our current crews, and then we have to figure out and scale it for how many crews are available for us. So, whether it's contractors, mutual aid, our other PNM crews, those times are going to be shifting depending on what resources we have available. We have a diagram on one that is our ideal scenario of notifications. So, we monitor weather. We're getting forecasts four times a day, and we're monitoring weather seven days out. The forecasts seven days out are a little fuzzy, but we begin monitoring, when we see stuff coming, we're monitoring that timeframe four to seven days. When we see something that hits our radar, we're reaching out to local governments, we're reaching out to first responders, hey, we're paying attention to this. We see this coming. So that they've got a heads up, so that they can plan along with us what we might need in case we have to do a public safety power shut-off. As we get closer to the event, the weather models get better, and so we have better granularity in what we might see. So, ideally, two to three days before an event, we will put out what we call a public safety power shut-off watch. Not dissimilar to a weather watch. It's like, hey, we're paying attention to this. This is out there. You need to pay attention. We're trying not to build any notification fatigue where people ignore signals that they're, hey, there might be some extreme weather coming, but we want to give them a heads up so that they can plan. So, whatever their life may need, whether it's adaptive services or whatever, we want them to be prepared in case an event happens. The day ahead, if it's still showing that it's going to be pretty extreme, that watch may move into a different kind of alert or a warning that, hey, tomorrow we may have to do a PSPS if the conditions don't improve. And so, we will issue those warnings, and we're trying to hit as many media sources as we can. So, it's social media, it's radio, it's newspaper, everything we can get our hands on to try to get the message out to consumers. That's what we're trying to do. And we know that people get their news in many different ways, so we're trying to hit as many of those as possible to get the word out. And then, if, on the day of, if it really looks extreme, we're monitoring hour by hour what's going on, and we're actually sending out field personnel to do some field observations so that we make sure we know how the actual conditions are matching up with the forecast before we make that final decision. And then, as soon as we're making that decision, we're letting everybody know, hey, we're going to turn the power off, or we're going to cancel. And last week was pretty intense for us in the northern part of the state. Monday and Tuesday, we had a lot of the system throughout New Mexico, everywhere, here, Ruidoso, Santa Fe, areas east of Albuquerque, Las Vegas, New Mexico, Clayton, New Mexico. We had that on that non-reclosed status, and they were that way for the whole week. But we're also monitoring weather on Thursday in the area around Santa Fe and east of Albuquerque. We were considering a public safety power shut-off. And in the area east of Albuquerque, as of noon Thursday, we had folks spread out from the top of the Sandia Mountains all the way down through the canyons with handheld anemometers, measuring wind, reporting back to us what it was. And we made a decision about noon on Thursday that the conditions did not match the forecast, and we chose not to do that shut-off. But, you know, here we are, another week in New Mexico in springtime weather, and so, we're monitoring what may come on Friday. And so, we're aware of the forecast. We're reaching out to our partners out there to say, hey, we're monitoring what's happening Friday. As of right now, the conditions are not to a point where it's warranting any kind of shut-off here in Grant County. The same thing in Lincoln County. It looks like the worst part of it for us is going to be in the northern part of the state. I did talk to my counterpart at Xcel Energy, Southwestern Public Service, who serves southeastern New Mexico and into west Texas, and they're considering a public safety power shut-off for their entire system over there. So, that's 700, over 700 feeters that they're going to turn off and impact potentially several hundred thousand customers. So, it's getting real, and things that you've been seeing on the west coast are moving east, and they're moving east into Texas, too. So, you know, it's going to become more prevalent, and I think this is going to become the new normal for everybody. So, you know, our big thing is getting the word out and trying to keep our customers aware. We've been sending out some information. So, there's some mailers out there that we've been mailing. There's going to be bill inserts. There has been some folks' emails, postcards. We're trying to hit people multiple times so they get information, which will refer them back to our website, so that they can get information and prepare themselves for what may come, whether it's more frequent outages because we're putting systems in non-reclose or because of a public safety power shut-off. But one of the things we have reinstituted is a program we called Life Watch, and it was people who have adaptive needs. So, whether it's oxygen, whether it's dialysis, whatever it is, it allows us to sign them up so they get an outage alert. And so, they're getting these alerts, whether it's text message, email, whatever their preferred communication method is, they can receive that. And then, they can designate one primary caregiver to get the alerts with them. So, normally, our system only allows one person per account to get outage-type alerts, but we've made a workaround to allow two. So, it's the account holder plus a primary caregiver. Again, trying to have people be prepared for what may come because you may lose power. And then, we'll be reaching out in newspaper and radio ads. But we've got some QR codes on the last page. You can scan those. It takes us to our website. So, we're just trying to get the word out. We appreciate you allowing us to come and talk a little bit about public safety power shut-off. So...
Thank you. Does the council have any questions, Councilor Condo?
Let's talk about this Life Watch program. So, you mentioned dialysis, which is near and dear to me since I'm a dialysis patient. I can guarantee you, nobody in my clinic knows about this because we talk every single time we go to treatment. So, you might be doing this, but you're not reaching the people it needed to be reached to. So, you might want to reach out to dialysis clinics. You might want to reach out to HMS because they know who their oxygen patients are. Because if we don't know about it, then we're not going to sign up for it, first of all. Second of all, telling me that my power's going to go out, and now I can't go to dialysis isn't going to help me in any way. So, is this actually providing like an extra, you know, somewhere that people can go to get oxygen, to get their dialysis, to get the other infusions, chemo treatments, things that are important in this community? Or is it just a, hey, your power's going to go out. Sorry about that. Hopefully, you live. Like, it doesn't seem like this is enough information for anyone, much less for people who really need it and aren't getting it. And like I said, I can guarantee you, the 100 patients at the dialysis clinic have not even heard about this.
We took some folks who normally do political canvassing, and the people that we're aware of, at least at this point, they're going door-to-door and make sure we have their current information and talking them through about getting signed up. And then, we're reaching out to some of these other areas. We've just been working on the notification piece of this for the last two weeks. So, it's something fairly new. But we thank you for your feedback, Counselor, because some of my team here are taking notes, and this is the kind of feedback we're looking for. Because as we've reached out to communities and we've talked to various stakeholders, city, county leaders, state leaders, emergency services, personnel, this is the kind of info we get, and it's helping us form our program and helping us evolve it and move it out. Because the thing that is tough for us is you don't know what you don't know, and you don't know how bad it can be. But first responders and community, looks at dialysis clinics and other folks, can give us information which will help us evolve that program and do better outreach. And so, definitely appreciate that feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Councilor Condo?
Yes, we had an incident, I think it was a few days ago, where a vehicle struck a telephone pole, and there was a big outage. I was in Walmart with a basket full of groceries when all the lights went out. Thank God the registers didn't go out. So, but anyway, I just want to thank your crews for taking care of that. It was an unfortunate incident, but I know you guys do your best to address those. So, pass that on to your people.
Will do. And we had some outages in both the upper and lower Members Valleys because we had things on one shot, and we had some problems in the upper Members. And then, the lower Members, we had some trees getting in line after that. So, those crews out there were going up and down the Members Valley, trying to get stuff put back together. And it was a longer outage than we would have liked, but we had resources scrambling, going everywhere. That's just the biggest challenge. Sometimes here, because of the distances, it's just, it takes us a little longer than even we would like. But we try to be respectful, try to get out there and get as much done as we can. But I appreciate that feedback.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank both Councilors. Press, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mayor Lassiter. I just wanted to do a quick dovetail on the Life Watch concerns and the vegetation management. I believe there's contact resources, and just for the broadcast minutes that we have here, contact information is up to date right now at pnm.com?
Yes.
Fantastic. And so, if anybody's having any concerns with vegetation that's happening on power lines around their home, it's not a bad idea to be able to reach out with a phone call or fill out the form online. Same thing for the Life Watch one, you know, we're all kind of in the mix of what's going to be the appropriate method of communication to reach the most number of people. I know the city and county, I believe, are using code RED. We've got a few emergency management systems that we're on contract with, that both city and county government, that just want to make sure if there are going to be concerns. Not sure if this is going to be appropriate entirely for that one, but just if we can in any way share over who we already have signed up for certain types of emergency communications, I do feel it might be appropriate to include power outages, plan power outages on it. And yeah, a part of the kind of question that is coming up, you know, I know it's not like a one-to-one, but if we're all kind of drawn off of the National Weather Services, and we see a red flag warning is going to be coming up for our community, what as a part of your internal decision-making are some of the metrics that we might be noticing as just citizens, citizen scientists that are looking at what's happening, just so we can start to actually know, hey, we might need to be paying extra attention to the messages coming in on our phone. Might need to be keeping radar up a little bit higher right now. What kinds of things are we looking at right now that run into the effect of public safety power shut-off call?
Though there's lots of factors. The red flag warning, it's wind speeds in and around 25 miles an hour, gust of 35, relative humidity less than 15%, and the National Fire Danger Information Rating Index. So, all the Smokey Bear signs you see around Forest Service, that rating, whatever it is, it has to be high, very high extreme. So, those are what go into the decision-making from the National Weather Service side of what's a red flag. Now, for us, the system, because of the work we put in it, the system itself and just how it's designed, is pretty resilient. So, we don't typically see too many problems. I mean, not to say that something couldn't blow in the line at 30, with 35 mile an hour winds, but typically, we don't see problems until the wind is a little bit higher than that. So, for us, the rule of thumb, depending on, the two big things are wind speed, wind gusts, and wind direction. If it's coming from the normal kind of prevailing wind direction here, south, southwest, we got a little more lightweight. It's going to be above 60 miles an hour gust forecast before we start putting stuff in a non-reclosed status or looking more toward public safety power shut-off. Again, it just depends on how bad it is. If it's coming from a non-pervailing direction, so anywhere else, north, east, those directions, we tend to see more problems at lower wind speeds. So, give or take 50 miles an hour. But all of that kind of factors in. So, in the modeling that we do, 10 miles an hour wind speed has a pretty drastic change on what it is. So, if the wind's not as much, but the fuel, the humidity and the fuel moisture's really dry, it drives us faster into turning stuff off. If the wind speeds are higher, but the fuel moisture is not so bad, it takes a little more wind speed to drive that decision-making. So, those are the variables that we're kind of dealing with. But, you know, that's the thing. It's for us, we never thought we'd be fire experts and managing fire behavior and paying as much attention to weather as we do. You know, we got wind in the spring that we deal with. We have monsoons in the summer that we deal with. That has been the norm for electric utilities in the southwest for a long time. And now, we're all becoming fire experts and weather experts, and we spend a lot more time focused on it. So, in my team, we are, we're looking at this four times a day, 6:00 AM, noon, 6:00 PM, and midnight, and we're rerunning the model every time, and we've got folks taking, keeping an eye on it. Anything changes, we start activating our internal emergency operations center so that we can start making decisions on how we operate the system.
Any other, Councilor Press?
And then, when it comes to potential opportunities for accommodation, you know, even with just a truck driving into a substation like we had last week, being able to plan out the time that we have then is especially important for folks that have refrigerated medications on top of oxygen concentration and what we already have to keep up with when it comes to medical personnel. When we're going to be looking at potential outages, in the mornings, it's not super windy. We can expect the power probably to come back on if all the conditions are met internally. Afternoons, we might have to look at a few more outages in particular areas. If the wind's going to be stretching into the night, we might have to start looking at what was going to be, you know, a 15-minute blinking event that we had that was happening with our winds a couple of years ago. That might stretch into hours at that point. For some of the windows that we're looking at right now, and I know the models for weather have been needing to be updated, too. We're seeing different conditions when it comes to, we just get a 48-hour warning when we're going to get snow when we would have known that we were going to get it even a week ago. I'm just kind of interested just as far as, I know, again, it's not 100%, but just for the times of outages, if we are going to be going through a high wind, high danger events, then for it, we can see outages for a couple hours in an afternoon. We can see outages until the sun goes down and the winds die down. What are some of the lengths that we might be considering right now?
If we're in non-reclosed, some of the outages we saw, you know, it was, I think, four or five hours. And part of it is just making sure that we get eyes on the line and make sure everything is safe to re-energize. That's the biggest key. The issue with us, if we're doing a proactive shut-off, is we love the daylight because our guys can work pretty efficiently. You've got real good view of the line. They can move a lot faster, and so, some of those patrols can move along pretty quickly. If we go to nighttime where we're having to try to do some of this at night, the time is 2 or 3X because it's just so much slower. And then, we face challenges. You don't want to put any personnel on somebody's private property in the middle of the night trying to patrol a line. It's going to be unnerving to the property owner themselves. It can put our folks in danger as well. So, we're very cognizant of that. So, we would do some selective patrolling. We try to stay on the roadways and then look at the sections in between when we get to daylight hours, once sunup comes in. daylight hours, once sunup comes in. In some of our exercises, we looked and the information sounds bad. With a skeleton crew, just our local crew in patrolling, if we had to patrol everything on our distribution facility, so it's about 750 miles here in Grant County, it would take three to four days to get everybody back on. Now, that is absolutely worst case, and that's not everyone three or four days. So in the town, we can patrol those lines fairly readily, and the town will come back on fairly quickly if we even choose to take a PSPS in town. But the rural areas, those folks living out White Signal, down in the Borough Mountains, out at Mule Creek and out past Cliff, the people going up the Members and then all the way up to the Cliff dwellings, those folks are going to see those long outages. So the way the patrols start is, we're going to do sectional step restoration. So they'll start from the sub, they'll patrol between the sub and the first switch where we can open. If it's in the clear, we'll open and energize behind. And we'll just keep working our way down the line to try to get it back on. And we'll have multiple crews patrolling, so we may get two or three sections at a time. So that's a worst case with a skeleton crew, and then depending on the additional resources that we have available, we'll bring in, those times come down. So we're trying to be as efficient as we can, not to scare anybody that, "Oh, my gosh, everybody in Grant County's going to be off for four days." No, we're not saying that. So it's what resources are available, because if there's a storm coming through and it's coming through southern Arizona, southern New Mexico, going into west Texas, we may not have as much available resource. So we may have to bring them in from Colorado, northern Arizona to help us out. So it's really about resource availability and then win.
I think that Council President has one more.
Yeah, just one last quick one. Of course, you know, neighbors know each other out this way. The outage maps have always been phenomenal resources where we know if you do need to be able to get access, you know, head on up further north on 61 or 35, then there's going to be some power running up the way there. The PNM outage map is presumably going to be representing then, if there do need to be de-energizes, that we're going to have those resources, and that's going to be updated along with everything else that.
Yes, and so those outage alerts, if they're for something proactive, your outage alert and/or the outage map will show it being for a public safety power shut off. It will be designated differently, it'll have a different color, a different icon for it when you're zoomed way out. As you zoom in, you'll get more clarity. And then again, we'll try to post those ETRs. Those ETRs are really idealistic, assuming we find no problems. If we start finding problems, then once that PSPS is restored, then we'll post an outage restoration and it'll go in to be just like a regular outage.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Counselor Ben Condo, Counselor Snyder, do you all have any questions? Thank you. Next on the agenda is, oh, one more thing. I want to thank PNM and Kevin Codosa for your prompt response to things that are going on in Silver City where we need your help. Thank you. Next on the agenda is 11D, the approval slash disapproval of Resolution 2025-09, a resolution for approval of the State of New Mexico's capital outlay public infrastructure funding for Silver City's Main Street Great Blocks project. Presenting will be the Main Street Director, Lufko Witz Oberg.
Hi, thank you. I'm really happy to have this resolution on the agenda tonight. So I am Charlotte Lufko Witz Oberg, the Executive Director of the Silver City Main Street Project. And we are an accredited organization with Main Street America and New Mexico Main Street. And through that accreditation, we are eligible to apply for the Great Blocks grant funding from New Mexico Main Street. They fund this program with capital outlay that they acquire for the Great Blocks grant. And we have applied for and been awarded $300,000 for Phase One of this project. And the project is looking to improve pedestrian safety and ADA accessibility downtown in the areas of Bullard Street and Texas and Yankee Street. We did a community input phase prior to the application, and we based the geographical location downtown and what to address on that public input that we received. And this is Phase One of a two-phase project. So with this Phase One monies that we were awarded, we will be able to do planning to become construction-ready. So we are excited about this project, we want to make these improvements downtown. But this first phase will allow us to figure out what exactly, you know, can happen, what exactly will best serve our community, and then get construction documents so that we are then able to apply to New Mexico Main Street for Phase Two for construction.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments, Counselor Condo?
Yeah, actually, I'm interested in this, the one that's on Yankee Street, because I see that, two things come to mind. First of all, when the water's coming, it's going to be going up the ramp, which is going to be interesting. And secondly, you're putting a ramp to get on a street where none of the buildings are accessible. Not one of those can be entered by a person in a wheelchair. So to me, that one's kind of one that might want to be reconsidered because it's not going to be helpful in any way, shape, or form.
That makes a lot of sense. Yeah, Counselor Condo.
Everything you see there is based on a walkthrough?
Yeah.
And just some ideas that came up?
Yeah, I was at that walkthrough. But that one, to me, is just kind of funny because if you get on the sidewalk, that's great, but you're not going to be able to get into any of those buildings.
I'll note that. Thank you for the.
Thank you. Were there any other council comments or questions? Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Prince?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move to approve of Resolution 2025-09, a resolution for approval of the State of New Mexico's capital outlay public infrastructure funding for Silver City's Main Street Great Blocks project.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Ben Condo?
I'll sit here.
Any discussion? Rule call, please, Mr. Sadeo.
Counselor Ben Condo?
Aye.
Counselor Prince?
Aye.
Counselor Snyder?
Aye.
Counselor Condo?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next is the agenda item 11E, the approval slash disapproval of Resolution 2025-10, a resolution authorizing a grant application for the emergency operating funds of the New Mexico Board of Finance for the Henry V. La Bura Morales Recreational Center by the Town of Silver City Council. Any questions or comments, Mr. Brown?
Mayor, Council, the town was originally awarded a total of $12 million from the state for this project. They have struggled to find the last $1.5 million of the funding. Apparently, they gave it away to somebody else. And so they asked that we submit our application to this grant program, which we should be okay with.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Brown? Do I, any discussion?
Did you say a million and a half?
Yes, we're only doing a million in this application because the project is actually a half a million dollars under budget.
Do I hear a motion? Counselor Condo?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of Resolution 2025-10, a resolution authorizing a grant application for the emergency operating funds of the New Mexico Board of Finance for the Henry V. La Bura Morales Recreation Center by the Town of Silver City Council.
Do I hear a second? Counselor Snyder?
A second is stated.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Rule call, please, Mr. Sadeo.
Counselor Ben Condo?
Aye.
Counselor Prince?
Aye.
Counselor Snyder?
Aye.
Counselor Condo?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 12, approval slash disapproval. The approval slash disapproval of closed executive session pursuant to NMSA 1978, Section 10-15-1H6, for meetings subject to the attorney-client privilege pertaining to threatened or pending litigation in which the public body is or may become a participant. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Condo?
Sir, Mayor, I move to approve of closed executive session pursuant to NMSA 1978, 10-15-1H6, meetings subject to the attorney-client privilege pertaining to a threatened or pending litigation in which the public body is or may become a participant after a five-minute recess.
Is there a second? Counselor Prince?
Second motion is stated.
Any discussion? Rule call, please, Mr. Sadeo.
Counselor Ben Condo?
Aye.
Counselor Prince?
Aye.
Counselor Snyder?
Aye.
Counselor Condo?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Does anyone need more than a 10-minute courteous break? Let's have a five-minute courtesy break for.